This June regular meeting of the Collingswood Board of Education is now called to order. In accordance with the Sunshine Law, notice of this meeting has been appropriately advertised as required by law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Mrs. Kayden?
Kayden?
Here.
Ms. Mello?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Rivera?
Yeah.
Ms. Severino?
Here.
Ms. Celia?
Here.
Mr. Stotts?
Here.
Mrs. Wood?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, please join us if you wish in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, there's no executive session at this time, so moving on to Section 3 of our agenda. Is there a motion from a board member to move to Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Dr. Oswald will discuss the planning that is taking place in September and the start of the new school year.
Okay. So, we started, we are starting our planning for September in the absence, as of today at least, of an ounce of guidance from the Department of Ed. So we have nothing from them. What we do know is that we have some guidance from our college and university and community college partners that has been released and an understanding that the K-12 guidance will be similar. So, that's what we're moving forward with. We also have guidance that was released a couple weeks ago now for, I want to say daycare, but daycare, summer camps, those types of things. So we are also looking at those items and trying to formulate something. Our understanding is that we should be receiving from some guidance this week for K-12 schools, preschool to 12 schools opening in September. So I'm going to walk you through what we're doing. Our guiding principles right now that I have tried to impress upon each of the groups is don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. There is no perfect plan out there. Nobody has the perfect plan. Even people that say they have the perfect plan at the end admit they don't have the perfect plan. So, you know, we're doing the best we can, given a lot of unknowns and obviously, as everyone knows, a situation that's changing pretty rapidly. I'm asking our groups to not leave from a place of constraints. Don't go into every meeting with the idea that we can't do something, but instead say this is what's best, you know, go in with the mindset, this is what's best and we should try to do this. And if we have things like contractual obligations and guidance from the Department of Ed or the CDC or whatever that pulls us back, that's fine, we have to live with that, we have to deal with that. But I'd rather not start every conversation with things we can't do, but instead look at it from the, through the lens of what we can do. And it may, you know, that kind of leads us to the next one, which I impress upon everybody in the district in the rush to get back to normal. Let's not forget which parts of normal aren't worth rushing back to. And there's plenty in education and I think in every field and every, you know, around the world, around the country that is not worth rushing back to. And I don't want to just keep going back to things that, you know, people, I think it's normal to say, I can't wait to get back to normal, but let's not forget that normal wasn't always so great, though, or certainly wasn't great for every group. So our process here is we have broken up into the district into four work groups. There is a school health and safety work group that is led by Mr. Hurd from the physical building facility side, and then Mr. Kulak from, who oversees, Ms. Kulak and Mr. Hammer will oversee the nurses at the elementary and middle school, high school levels. There's an instruction and mental health group that is led by Mrs. McPartlin for the elementary instruction, Mr. Yamamoto for secondary instruction, and Dr. Whitehouse for the mental health side. They're working together. There's an operations and fiscal management group that is Mrs. Coleman's taking the lead on that. And then there's a steering committee, which is my group, that really is kind of just overseeing some of the other groups to make sure that, you know, Group A doesn't say one thing and Group B recommend the opposite, you know, the opposite. So, there has to be a level of coherence between all these plans and make sure that what the health and safety group wants, the instruction group is on board with and vice versa. Also, we're looking at equity, which has become increasingly important during remote learning, and then communication, the communication piece. I will tell you, communications, we did a survey of our staff before they left a week ago Friday, so we have some really good data from them. We had over 320, I believe, responses from the staff. We do have a survey that I worked on to go out to parents, and that I'm hoping to send out Thursday or Friday of this week. I have a, my committee, my steering committee is meeting Thursday morning, so I just want to run it by them, see if they have any input. Maybe there's other questions we should ask, or perhaps there's some questions we, you know, we don't really need to ask. So that survey kind of looks like this. You can see that, maybe go back to the beginning. So it asks for some school and grade level information, just so we can disaggregate some of the data, also whether the person responding has a child with an IEP or five-year four plan. We asked parents' return to school preferences, completely understanding that this may be totally different in August. And when I send it out, I will explain to folks that, you know, just, this is kind of a gut check, what do you feel like right now? And in August, things may be very different and they may feel differently, that's fine. School safety, what types of things do you think are critical? I think the categories are very important, somewhat important and not important to me. We do have data along these lines from across the nation, from other large, really large school districts that have done this. So it'll be interesting to see how the Collingswood and Oakland data compares. We're asking a bit about masks, if wearing a mask is a condition of your child to return, will you send your child? And then how comfortable is your child going to be with that? So we know we have students who are going to struggle with masks, and we know that there's a certain grade level under which it's not even recommended. But we want to know sort of, are parents working with their kids and kids are getting used to the mask thing, or is it still a struggle every time you leave the house? Then there's some remote learning questions. Communication, at the end of last school year, how did you see that? What did you feel about the work? Learning resources, was it too much, just right, et cetera? As a family member, guardian, how would you rate the time and effort it took to oversee the instruction, the remote instruction? And then there's some questions about, what do you think, if we had to go back to remote at some point in the fall, what's important to you, what's essential, what's important, what's not so important? And I think that's it. So, some of these questions may change as a result of the feedback from, you know, my work group, but I think in general, this will be what the survey looks like. And we're hoping to send that out Thursday or Friday with a pretty quick turnaround time. Survey Monkey tells me it shouldn't take anybody more than four minutes to finish this. So, I have found over and over that when we give people two weeks, they forget about it because they're always going to do it two weeks from now, and you probably get less of a response than just, hey, open this up and do it right now. So that's the survey. Oops, let me switch back here. So the members of the group, we have administrators on each of these teams, supervisors, some teachers, nurses, and members of our associations from both Collingswood and Oakland, because we know it's important to have our staff on board with this. Under the school health and safety kind of umbrella, there are four separate areas of focus. School facilities is certainly one. General health protocols, protocols that will apply to everybody, student or staff. Staff health protocols, there are some there that may be slightly different than what we would apply to students. And then same things, student health protocols that may be different than what we apply to staff. Most of the category is going to be here. So that's that group. The second group is the, has the kind of the heaviest lift. So schedules and learning time, that's going to be a big issue, and we hope to get some real good data from the survey on that. Remote learning best practices, starting tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with about 28 teachers, I think it is, that our supervisors and administrators have identified as really doing a great job during remote learning. So we're going to try, I'm going to use the word, put together a manual, it's not really going to be a manual, but just some ideas about best practices in remote learning, what worked, what strategies, classroom structures, what classroom management. And we're going to get here into a little bit more about assessment. And then we're going to look at instruction at the early elementary, instruction at the upper elementary, instruction at the middle school and high school, because we know that strategies are different, you know, for each of those grade spans. Co-curricular, looking at some co-curricular recommendations, some mental health recommendations, we know that's going to be an issue. And then special education, and by special education here, I mean the actual team, the child study team, case management, case managers, or related services providers. In terms of instructional support, that'll be covered up in these groups. So, special education teachers will be mixed in here. The specialist-related services folks will be here. Operations and fiscal management, Mrs. Coleman's going to look at the budget and any implications that the budget has. Obviously, the budget will touch every piece of this plan. Human resources, are we going to have to reduce anywhere, you know, or do we have a need elsewhere that we might have to shift some budget money around? The area of technology, we are looking to purchase a device for every student in the district, both Collingswood and Oakland. We have most of those, but not all of them. Food service is a bitty, and then obviously transportation. We're very fortunate there in that we don't transport a ton of kids, but we do transport some kids. And I will tell you, across the state, this is going to be our biggest hurdle. You have, we had a severe shortage of bus drivers prior to this thing even happening, and since we have been closed for a few months, our bus drivers have, I think, figured out, many of them across the state, that they can take their CDL and go work for Amazon and make more money. So I'm not sure how eager they're going to be to come back. And I believe that that's going to be your biggest challenge across the state. The steering committee is my group, we're going to look at coherence, making sure the other groups' recommendations align, communications, equity, and then if there's anything in the governance piece, which would be board matters, I don't suspect there's going to be much there, but in case there are some policies that we need changed, or some recommendations we can make at the state level, that'll come in here. The three scenarios we're looking at are basically the three scenarios everybody's looking at. Face-to-face, everybody returns to school with some safety and social distancing protocols. I think that that's probably the scenario that's least likely, because we just can't keep social distancing and all those safety protocols. We can't adhere to those if we bring 2,500 students back across two districts. Hybrid model is where we split our students probably into half, maybe thirds, but probably half, and we do some instruction in person with some students, and then instruction remotely when they're not in school, and they kind of alternate days, alternate weeks. That's one of the questions in the survey, what would work best for families? Or AM PM, obviously, morning, afternoon sessions. Remote instruction is we stay remote the whole time. I don't think that that's going to be a recommendation, I don't think that'll be a recommendation, but who knows? And I will tell you, in either this case or this case, we have to be ready to pivot kind of on a dime and go remote if we need to. I will tell you today, I received some guidance that came out, not that it impacts us, but I received some guidance that came out from the Bucks County Department of Health over in Pennsylvania that I thought was absolutely phenomenal. We have not seen an ounce of anything like that in New Jersey. My fear with guidance that's coming out so far from the state level, the minimal guidance from the state level, and some of the CDC stuff, is I believe they are raising parents' hopes to believe that we can actually do some of those things. We can't do those things. So, the stuff that came out from Bucks County, which after this is over, I'll be happy to share with the board members, that is really, I think, very doable. And I think it's, the biggest thing that I read in there, because I'm a geek, is that the Department of Health, the Department of Emergency Services Group, and the school districts got together and understood each other's roles. That has never happened in New Jersey throughout this entire experience. So, I will send that out to you, but I think that that's been some of the best guidance that I've seen. Unfortunately, it doesn't apply to us, but maybe someone in New Jersey will read it and take note. Tomorrow morning, I'm going to start with this group, which is the best practices in remote instruction. We're going to look at what classroom routines work best within each grade level. I sent this group three or four kind of research articles, journal articles, to just read and ponder, not saying they were the solutions, but certainly some things that we should consider. What classroom management procedures work best, and then what tools work best with each of these groups. And then this is the final slide, and I just keep, you know, every time we meet virtually as an administrative team, and tomorrow as a teacher team, you know, I'm going to keep reiterating, now, everybody wants to get back to normal, but there are parts of normal, particularly for some groups of kids, there are parts of normal that aren't worth rushing back to. And I will tell you that I'm a firm believer that if we go back in September and do everything the way we did it a year ago, we have really wasted a good crisis. This has been a terrible experience, I think, for most people. And when you have a crisis, you have a responsibility to come out stronger on the other side. So I am pushing that and will continue to push that until the very end. I am not sure that I'm going to be able to see everybody, but does everybody, anybody have any questions?
None here.
I would just ask you to unmute yourself and ask, because I'm not sure I can see everybody.
Scott, this is Reagan.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yep, I can.
Okay. I was, you may not have the answer to this yet, because as you said, there's not much guidance, but I was curious if, you know, we're looking at the different scenarios and, you know, if hybrid is maybe most likely, but if the survey comes back and there are some parents that say, well, we're not sending our kid back.
Yeah, we've already got them.
Do you have any idea, like, is that going to, how that will impact both the families and also the school district's attendance numbers?
Well, again, without guidance, I can't promise any of this, but my, I'm going to assume that if students are learning, we know we're going to have families that aren't comfortable sending their students back. Some of it's going to be because the student has some health issues, and some of it's going to be emotional. I'm like, it's going to be a mix of that. So, if those students are completing their work at home remotely, as they did this past spring, then they will be in attendance over here that day. You know, what I'm going to try, you know, I think sometimes as teachers, as school people, we lose sight of the fact that our, every one of our families, our 25, however many, you know, the families that represent our 2,500 students, don't operate the same. And, you know, we have some staff that really want mandatory attendance at classroom sessions. And that's a great goal, but that's not going to happen, because some kids, you know, they're not in a place at 10:00 AM where they can do that. And we just have to, we have to understand that, that we're going to have to be flexible with that. So I do think, that certainly is something we're planning for, there are going to be some students who have to, who are going to remain remote by their own choice. So that's on our radar, we'll plan for that. And I think the results of the survey will kind of help guide us in what direction, you know, how robust that really needs to be and how many staff we need to dedicate to it. I'm also sure that we're going to have some staff who can't come back. We have some staff who have some health issues. So if the planets align, I think it makes perfect sense if the staff who need to stay home match up with the kids who need to stay home, and then we have an answer. I'm not foolish enough to think the planets are going to align that nicely, but, you know, we certainly can cover some of it that way. But that's on our radar.
I have a question, this is Syria.
Sure.
I'm just wondering, and it may be a stretch, is there a district that someone's, it may not, it's definitely not going to be in this area, but somewhere in the country that opened up earlier, that goes to school earlier than us, that we can kind of look into what percentage of their kids come back?
Yep. So we know that our southern states open earlier than we do. Some of our midwestern state, or, yeah, midwestern, a little further western states, open earlier than we do, and I am sure that the data we get from them will be very telling. I also, if you, you know, you watch the maps now, those are also the states now that are getting hit the hardest. So, the states back in March, April, May, that kind of didn't get hit so hard, are now seeing it. So, does that mean that we won't, that we won't see another kind of surge? I don't know. But if you look at which states are really showing, I think right now, showing the greatest spike, I think you're going to find that it's the states that really weren't impacted previously. So it'll be interesting to see what that does to their school plans. That's a good point, because the states that are getting hit the hardest right now are the states that go back a period of years.
Yeah.
So we'll watch that closely, just to see what happens.
Okay, thanks.
We do know from the European countries, sadly, I don't know, we know a lot, we know that some opened very successfully and really didn't have any spike, and some really had it, they got hit hard. So I don't know that there's any takeaway from that necessarily.
So Scott, I just, this is Fiona, I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, the board appreciates the diligence of the district to, you know, in the past few months, you had to create a plan and implement a plan with ongoing, you know, guidance and mandates, and you had to do what you had to do to ensure the well-being of our students, and that was no small task, and then no sooner did you barely finish that, than you had to turn around and start this again. So we appreciate everyone in the district who's involved with this. I do think that reaching out to the public for planning is going to bring us greater success, so I'm very happy to see that. And I'm also happy to hear your commentary that any plan we do is going to take student well-being into account. Thank you. Are there other board members that have questions or comments on this topic? So seeing none, we will move out of Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion to leave Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. It's Clinton.
Aye.
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 And then Section 4 of our agenda is our presentation section. What's listed on the agenda is the harassment, intimidation, and bullying self-assessment score report. Dr. Oswald, who will be presenting this report?
This is, so what we did back in August, you already saw this report, so the way this works is, we collect this data, obviously you see there, it's from the 1819 school year. So back in August, Mr. Yamamoto presented this to you, and you approved submitting the HIV self-assessment. The state then does whatever it does with those numbers, and in May or June, they send the same numbers back to us and say, now you have to present the same numbers all over again that we've already done. So, there is nothing in here that you haven't seen. The numbers are listed there, we're not going to do a formal presentation because you've already seen that. These are the HIV scores that you saw back in August. They get churned through the state government somehow, and they come back to us exactly as we submitted them. They're up on our website as required. After that, there's really nothing else that we can eat and do.
Thank you for that. Section 5 on our agenda is future dates and miscellaneous information. At this time, we have no specific event dates listed, but please continue to check the website and focus on school communications for any information. And of course, the board will resume its regular meetings in August. Section 6 on the agenda is approval of minutes of last month's board meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
And is there a second?
No second. This is Nina.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then also on Section 6, it's just a list of the school business administrators' approval of contracts. Moving on to Section 7, it is our first opportunity for public comment. Please state your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes or less. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items that are listed on the agenda, and any additional more general comments may be made later in the meeting. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. And if you recall, for the past several digital board meetings we've been having, you'll have to type your comment into the chat section, and if it's going to take you some time to type it in, at least type your name in so we know that you are, we know to wait for you. So, we'll wait a minute to see if there's any public comments listed in the chat section. Dr. Oswald, do you see any comments?
Nope, not at this time.
Okay. All right, seeing that there is no public comment, we will move on to Section 8. There will be another section for public comment at the end of the meeting. Section 8 is our superintendent's report. Dr. Oswald?
Okay, so 8.01 is the enrollment, enrollment report. May 2020 compared to May 2019, up a little over 100 students, 25 students. School safety, drill report, obviously we have not been in session. Suspension report, the same. Anti-bullying report, very fortunately, we have not had any reported incidents of cyberbullying, so that's good. And then there are no first, so all of them are none, and then there are no first readings of policy at this time. That's it.
Thank you very much. Section 9 would have normally been our student resource, we have no students at this time, but we do wish, and we congratulate our seniors and we wish them the best. Section 10 is our business administrator, board secretary report. Ms. Coleman?
Yes, this evening, I'm looking for approval for your May 2020 monthly transfers, your May 2020 secretary treasurer's reports, cash reports, your financial backup, your May 2020 student activity financial reports, as well as a listing of the June purchase orders and a list of warrants to be sent tomorrow morning.
Thank you. Section 11 is our Buildings, Grounds, and Finance Committee report, and this will be presented by Ms. Celia, the chairperson.
Good evening. The Finance, Buildings, and Grounds Committee reviews all financial statements, purchase orders, and warrants on a monthly basis. The committee also reviews and approves all contracts with outside service providers and oversees all maintenance and capital improvement projects district-wide. This evening, we have a number of matters on the agenda, which I will go through, for approval of the transfers that were just mentioned, the board secretary certifications of no over expenditures at 11.03, 11.04, and 11.04. 11.05 is the approval of the secretary and treasurer reports. 11.06, approval of student activities report. 11.07, the approval of the food service financial statement. 11.08 is the purchase orders. Warrant approvals are Agenda Item 11.09. 11.10 is the bid threshold, qualified purchasing agent threshold has increased from $40,000 to $44,000. Item 11.11 is the shared maintenance service agreement with Barrington. Their special education placements are at 1112. 1113 is the educational staffing services, paraprofessional contracts. 11.14 is the return of surplus funds from the Burlington County Insurance Pool Joint Insurance Fund. The year-end reserve deposits are at Item 11 Sep. 15. 1116 is the shared service trash removal contracts. The maintenance and grounds electrical supply contracts are founded, or expenditures are founded, Item 1117. Item 1118, the maintenance and grounds, the plumbing supply bids awarded. 1119, awarding the Counteract for District Engineers to Remington and Vernick. Item 1120, the 2019 and 2020 ESEA Consolidated Grant Amendment for Title I is at this Agenda item. And Item 11.24 is seeking approval for Items 11.01 through 11.20.
Thank you, Ms. Celia. Is there a motion to approve those items?
So moved, this is Nina.
Is there a second?
Second, this is Sarah.
Are there any questions or comments from board members? If so, don't forget to unmute your mic and announce your name. Okay. And seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera? Ms. Rivera?
Oh, sorry, yes, I was muted.
That's right. Ms. Severino?
Yeah.
Ms. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Mrs. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Section 12 on our agenda is our Curriculum Committee report, to be presented by Ms. Reagan-Kaden.
Reagan, you're muted.
Sorry. I moved myself out of the way and then I couldn't get back over. Okay. The Curriculum Committee oversees and approves the district curriculum and assessment programs, as well as field trips, home instruction, co-curricular programs, and the school calendar. Items 12.02 to 12.04 are elementary, middle school, and high school field trips, which we have none of at the time, or at this time, excuse me. Item 12.05 is asking for the approval of the Stockton University High School Partnership Program, which will allow high school students which will allow high school students to get credits from Stockton University for classes that they take. Item twelve point oh six is approval of the two thousand and twenty elementary summer learning experience for, that replaces the summer steam, enrichment steam programs that we had, we've had in the past. Twelve point oh seven is the approval of using Camp Sunnyside as our two thousand and twenty summer extended school year alternative program. So asking for approval of items twelve point oh two to twelve point oh seven tonight.
Thank you so much. Do we have a motion for those items?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second, this is Sarah.
Ms. Coleman, did you get both names?
Yes, I did.
Are there any questions or comments from board members? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to roll call.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Severino?
Yeah.
Ms. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes, except for the items marked with asterisks where I abstain.
And Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Moving on to section thirteen of our agenda is our personnel committee report presented by Ms. Miller.
Personnel committee reviews all recommendations for teaching and staff employment, considers co-curricular employment and considers all professional development opportunities for staff members. Tonight, we are seeking approval for the following. Thirteen point oh two is a retirement for Ms. Carol Johnson. Thirteen point oh three is a rescinded contract. Thirteen point oh four and oh five are New Jersey Family Medical Leave Act. Thirteen point oh six is a part-time ignite program teacher for the eighteen and twenty-one year old program. Thirteen point oh seven is a high school secretary ten-month contract. Thirteen point oh eight is a preschool secretary ten-month contract. Thirteen point oh nine is elementary school long-term sub nurse. Thirteen point ten, eleven, twelve are summer learning experience staff for the elementary, middle school and high school. Thirteen point thirteen is the summer, two thousand and twenty summer shark story time. Thirteen fourteen is the two thousand and twenty summer program staff. Thirteen fifteen and sixteen is the two thousand and twenty summer IEP meetings. Thirteen seventeen is the summer child study team staff. Thirteen point eighteen is the summer child study team related services. Thirteen nineteen is the two thousand and twenty CPI training. Thirteen twenty is the summer social work, general student support Oakland Shared Services. Thirteen twenty one is the child study team Oakland Shared Services. Thirteen twenty two and twenty three are summer hours for the ten-month secretaries to work. Thirteen point twenty four, twenty five and twenty six is the curriculum development for elementary, middle school and high school. Thirteen point twenty seven is the summer SEL curriculum staff stipend. Thirteen twenty eight is the summer curriculum staff stipend. Thirteen twenty nine is the two thousand and twenty preschool summer family support. Thirteen thirty, thirty one and thirty two are summer professional learning, community workshop for the elementary, middle school and high school. Thirteen thirty three is the summer building best practices for remote instruction at the elementary school, for the elementary staff. Thirteen thirty four and thirty five is the summer building best practices for remote instruction for middle school and high school. Thirteen thirty six is the two thousand and twenty summer buildings and ground workers. Thirteen thirty seven is the summer district drivers. It's the revised list. Thirteen thirty eight is the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one student nurse placement. Thirteen thirty nine is the middle school athletic stipends. Thirteen forty is the high school athletic stipend. Thirteen forty one is the high school non-athletic EDP stipends. Thirteen, where are we? Thirteen forty two is the middle school non-athletic EDP stipend. Thirteen forty three is the elementary non-athletic EDP stipend. Thirteen point four four is the substitute and tutors. Thirteen point four five is the travel expense for professional development. Thirteen point four six is the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one contract for Mrs. Coleman, the business administrator. Thirteen point four seven is the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty superintendent's evaluation. Thirteen point four eight is the superintendent merit goals results. Thirteen point four nine is the payment for the superintendent's two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty merit goals. Thirteen point five zero is the chief school administrator, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty professional development update. Thirteen point fifty one is the recognition of retiring faculty and staff. And thirteen point five two is the summer hiring. And we are seeking approval for items thirteen point oh one to thirteen point five two.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Is there a motion for those items? Please remember to unmute yourself and announce your name. Will there be a motion?
You hear that?
Is there a board member who will make a motion for?
So moved. It's Chris.
And is there a second?
A second. It's Matt.
Thank you. I think we had some technical difficulties. Any questions or comments from board members?
Do I need, do I, this is Heidi Wood, do I need to abstain from the Oakland Shared Services part?
No.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments?
This is Mary. I just had a question about the professional development update. That's a five-year plan, right? Am I correct on that? Yes?
Yes, that aligns with the contract.
Right, that's okay. So there, it's nothing new. You were just kind of like updating the progress thing? That's what I was reading?
With the exception of the first year, the only thing that gets updated is that last, the last box is at the bottom, left of the box.
Okay, I just wasn't sure what it, kind of what it was. So, thank you.
Okay, can we move to a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes, except for thirteen seventeen where I abstain.
Mrs. Kayden?
Mrs. Kayden, if you're responding, we can't hear you.
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Severino?
Yeah.
Ms. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts? Bill, you're muted.
Stotts, you're muted.
I'm sorry, let me try it again. Yes, except those items marked with a double asterisk where I abstain.
Ms. Wood?
Why you're muted?
I vote yes. I abstain for all the items with any asterisks. And I'm also going to abstain from thirteen forty seven, forty eight and forty nine.
And Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Policy and miscellaneous is the next section, section fourteen on our agenda. Dr. Oswald, could you please review the items in this section?
Sure. Fourteen oh one is the nineteen, two thousand and nineteen to twenty-two communication plan with some of our communication initiatives outlined within that plan. Twenty, fourteen oh two is the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one superintendent evaluation instrument, which is just a hair different than the one that we've used the last year or so, a couple of years. So there have been a couple of adjustments made to that. And this is just getting that new instrument approved prior to the start of next school year, for the next year. Fourteen oh three is the second reading of the policy that I think is facilities, use of facilities policy. Fourteen oh four, just reiterating that there were no HIV incidents reported during the previous month. And fourteen oh five, there are no regulations.
Great, thank you. So it looks like we're looking for approval of items fourteen oh one through fourteen oh four. Is there a motion?
So moved. This is Nina.
Clinton's second.
Great. Any questions or comments from board members? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Connor? Mr. Connor? Okay. Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Kayden?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Severino?
Yeah.
Ms. Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Henry?
Yes.
Moving on to section fifteen on our agenda is our second opportunity for public participation. Please state your name and address and keep your comments to five minutes or less. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. Again, if you have a question or comment, please type it into the chat box. And if you could just type your name in quickly, we will know to wait for you while you type your longer comment.
Okay, we have one comment, Mr. Sher. He's an Oakland resident, one eighteen West Beachford Avenue in Oakland. Like to thank Dr. Oswald, Mr. Jen and all teacher staff administrators at the high school who cared for the class of two thousand and twenty and made their last months of high school as memorable and enjoyable as possible. The event on the football field was meaningful and memorable and we look forward to the ceremony on the twentieth. Is the prom on the twenty-third still planned? The answer to that right now is probably no, but we have to have some more discussion about that. I will tell you that for the twentieth, we did have a meeting today about the ceremony on the twentieth and senior parents or senior families will be getting more information, I would say by the end of this week at the latest, on that. Comments that went above and beyond the communications caring and senior events. So that was that comment. So, Mrs. Henry, do you want to respond to that at all or just have me keep going?
I think, I think you did respond.
Jen Rossi, one fourteen East Palmer. In regards to summer programming, who should caregivers reach out to with questions about Google Classroom? On the summer website that was sent, I think last weekend, again this morning, there's a tab that says contact list, there's a tab for contacts. It'll be obvious when you'll get it. And those folks are listed there. And does the summer program allow for fat, district to continue supplying families in need with meals? Yes. That's available at the same time and kind of we tried to keep that as consistent as possible. So that will be Mondays between ten and twelve noon at the high school cafeteria. The only change there is we don't have the transportation or delivery available in the summer. But it will be there Mondays from ten to ten AM to twelve noon in the high school cafeteria, right outside the high school cafeteria, just as it has been. And that is also for Oakland families, since Oakland is under construction. We cannot safely do that there. So it's for everybody.
Thank you.
Ms. Henry, go on.
I have another, if you don't mind reading that for us, Dr. Oswald.
Sure, we have a couple. Kate Delaney, one twenty-six East Palmer. In light of recent police brutality? Let me know if I'm going too fast. I do that. There are a lot of calls for police free schools. I'm wondering if the superintendent board have thoughts on this matter. I don't know that we have police in our, we don't have police in our schools right now, except for the fifth grade program. And I will tell you that likely on Thursday or Friday, when we send out the parent survey, we are putting together a parent, we are putting together a group as well to talk about anti-racism curriculum, anti-racism education, those types of topics. So we'll be reaching out to folks who may be interested. Obviously, we won't be able to invite everybody into the group because it'll become unmanageable. But we are going to look for a cross-section of families from a cross-section of schools. You know, a cross-section of races and ethnicities and so we'll try to get a good cross-section of people there from the community that will join our staff in a discussion. We are also doing a district-wide, kind of launched by one of our high school teachers, which I think grew beyond what she expected, but we're doing a district-wide book read this summer. And I believe that last count, when I checked in, she had sixty-eight, I think was the number. Staff members who were participating voluntarily over the summer in the district-wide book read and it is have it in the next room, I can't, so you.
So you want to, so you want to talk about race?
Right, yeah, that's what I thought about. So that's the book. And I know that some other staff members have reached out to me with some other, you know, books that I've read in the past that are really good. So I know even if they're not participating in that particular book read, they are participating in other, they are reading other related material. Go on, Ms. Henry?
Yes, please.
Lori Kerfrin, four sixty Center Street. With the challenges of COVID, I am not sure if it has been thought of, thought about, but with the current climate, will the district be looking to include more education about black history throughout the year? And also make extra efforts to diversify classes and bring more diverse students on board? Or more, I'm sorry, bring the more diverse teachers on board. Yes, I think the first part of that question is absolutely what we're trying to do with this, with both the book read and also the group of staff members and some community members that are going to, you know, hopefully work together. And that'll be a K-12. We're going to have a preschool group that'll meet. We're going to have a K to five group that'll meet and we're going to have a six to twelve group that'll meet to talk about those exact issues. And in terms of diversifying staff, diversifying our teaching staff, we've been working on that for five plus years, probably longer than that. We have had some success at the middle school and high school. We have struggled at the elementary schools. So if you only have elementary age students, you probably don't necessarily recognize the success we've had at the secondary level, which is obviously, you know, understandable. We are going to refocus our energies on the elementary levels. I can tell you this past year, we have, we made three offers to staff members from diverse backgrounds and all three initially accepted positions and then I think in two out of the three cases, it was a, I got something closer to home. And the other case, somebody kind of outpaid us. So, so we are trying. That is something that I have stressed with them for probably more than five years. I'll conservatively say five years. But it is something we absolutely work on.
Great, thank you. Are there more comments?
That's all I have right now.
So as we wrap this section up, if any members of the public have intent to make a comment, quickly type your name in so we know to wait for you. Otherwise, we will move on. And I'd like to thank Dr. Oswald for reading, reciting the questions as they come in and answering them so eloquently. I would also like to thank members of the public for posing these questions because there's a lot, there probably is a lot of questions surrounding everything that's going on in the district at this current time. And so, you know, feel free to reach out to the board office with questions. And also, if you hear others in the community with questions, encourage them to reach out because there are supports in place.
And I have a question, is that appropriate?
Yes, I was going to take questions and comments from board members.
Thanks. I know we got interrupted on our own board book study, but I also think there's an opportunity here for us to look at a different book as a board. And we, maybe we can talk about that someplace, some recommendations, but looking again at doing some anti-racism work at the board level with our next book study.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We can communicate over the summer about that. And although we don't officially meet in the summer, perhaps our informal conversations could lead to a more formal conversation in August. So we could start September with a new study. Or maybe a continuation of the other and an additional study. Good point.
I would say to that, if you, if you want to start something now, the So You Want to Talk About Race is an excellent. This is an excellent book. And then the Kendi stuff is also really good. I think it's a little bit. So You Want to Talk About Race is a nice read. It's a good read. It gets deep enough to kind of make you uncomfortable. The Kendi stuff is kind of a little bit more heady, I think. So depending on how deep you want to get into it, I think that that's, those are some good resources if you, if the board wants to just start on their own.
Yeah, great. Thanks.
And I can send you that. I can send you, I can email you those books if you, just so you have the right one.
Okay, yeah, we appreciate that.
This is a little off top, like, off topic. This is Chris. I'm moving back to what I probably should have posed in my committee report. I was wondering.
I was wondering if Beth Ann could give us an update to see whether she's heard anything from Trenton about our financing as a result of, you know, the financial situation because of COVID and the tax, the taxes that we receive.
Not since our last report. The governor's going to obviously do his budget in September. Our state aid, we will get our June state aid payments. They have promised us that. So we will be getting them around July 8th. So if there is going to be a state, state or state aid delay, it will most likely be the October payment.
Okay.
But that has not been confirmed yet. We're waiting to see when he actually does his budget. So for the 1920 school year, we will be made whole as far as state aid in the first week of July. And I've done a cash flow going through the summer, so we are fine with cash into the fall. And again, like, his budget will be done around September 30th. So there has been talk that we probably will not see, we probably will not see state aid right away in October, but I don't know if that's going to be one payment or two, or if that's just hearsay. Because we haven't really heard anything from finance in the last couple of weeks.
Well, thank you. Didn't mean to pitch on the spot at the end.
Oh, no, that's fine, I should have said something. I apologize.
No, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members or the public?
Beth Ann, this is Clinton. And similarly, I mean, I heard stuff about local taxes a while back, but I haven't heard much since. Has there been any further conversation about local taxes not having to give money to the district or anything like that?
No, that was actually passed, and I believe that's still sitting on the governor's desk. The governor has not approved that as far as letting towns hold on to our tax payments. So we are whole with regards to our taxes. We are receiving our money timely from the borough. So I guess the governor doesn't want to pull the trigger on that one quite yet, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
As I can tell, you're all good questions, and all the questions from the public are good. We are, I would say the most frustrating part about this experience from our side is every single thing we do is brand-new. So, you know, usually at this point, we can kind of lean back on some of the tradition. This is now every single decision we make is brand-new. So there are going to be a lot of just questions, though, so. And the questions make us think, so keep them coming.
Any other comments before we adjourn? And Dr. Oswald, there's no more comments in the chat? And then moving on to our final item, Section 16 is the adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved, Clinton.
And is there a second?
Second, Celia.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, have a good summer.
Yes.
Bye.
Take care of everyone.